This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Minutes Act, Board of Education, as a resolution that is being held on January 8th, 2013. The meeting set forth the schedule for the three meetings and resolutions that have been set up as of passage. The schedule was set to the promised date of March 11th, the end of our news. The township of Corona and Maran Education was situated. Postings of this meeting set forth the title of the session and agenda were posted each within six schools, board office, and town hall. This posting was also sent to the newspapers, all S B presidents, and S D A, the A's office. Mr. Malina?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Yunus?
Here.
Mr. Contraji?
Here. Okay. You guys have wonderful mics there. I'll ship them aside. So we have a format that will follow, I think Mr. Malina has communicated that to each of you through email. It's very, very simple. We'll go through three questions each, each person. Use your own speed, be yourselves, there's no right or wrong answers or anything. And trying to time it and keep it to about ten to fifteen minutes per person if you can. The board will then go off, we'll have a dialogue tonight. I do have, I do have a request from at least one board member that we don't decide this tonight, given personal challenges on time and all the rest of it. So we'll get back to you probably sometime in about a week, week and a half with sort of board sentiment and where we can head it and timing on. The format that the board had agreed to at the last meeting is to have each of you speak to three questions. The first one, very simply, just an introduction, introductory comment about yourself. Again, there's no right or wrong answer, anything you can tell us, interesting to know. Second question is, what motivates you to consider this position? The third thing is, what you believe are the top three priorities and challenges that face the Verona School District, not education in general, specific to Verona. So we've picked names out of hat, with the exception of one name, Mr. Gardner has a commitment at the library, sorry, Mr. Gardner has a commitment at the library tonight?
Yes.
So we rate some, some right for, we have two points of issue, we rate some issues at the first, yeah, no problem. So we'll start with you, again, your own speed, introductory, about yourself, what motivates you to consider this position, and top three priorities and challenges facing this position.
Thank you, President Contraji. I actually prepared a couple of remarks because of the time constraints, so bear with me. John Adams once said that there are people that are better at pulling down and building up. Throughout my professional and personal life, I've truly aspired to be a builder, someone who has integrity, is diligent, is collaborative, and respectful, doesn't dwell on the negative or assigned blame, but rather builds consensus, someone who overcomes challenges by finding solutions through persistence and visionary and strategic thinking. In the aftermath, in the aftermath of September 11th, I channeled a personal loss and grief into action, building a nonprofit organization to help families who were impacted by the events. We faced many obstacles throughout that process, and I chose not to focus on how daunting the tasks at hand were, but rather on the historical importance of our efforts. In the end, we built an alliance with historic preservation groups, including the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and succeeded at preserving some of the most historic artifacts and assets of the World Trade Center site. Our efforts helped to shape what millions of visitors at the 9/11 Memorial Museum will experience and what students will learn on this subject for generations to come. Throughout my career in the nonprofit and public sectors, I have developed and cultivated boards, either contributing as a board member or as an executive director. I have raised millions of dollars to develop and offer programs. I have focused on evaluating programs to ensure their impact and effectiveness. I'm currently serving on the, on the board of the Verona Public Library, and together with my colleagues on the board, we're working towards making the library a more relevant and visible center in the community. I understand what it takes for boards to be effective, both through best practice and through real-world experience. Perhaps the greatest lesson that I've learned so far about board engagement and involvement is that board members need to understand their role. I think that's probably one of the, in order to ensure that they're productive contributors, and they must always keep the mission front and center as they advance their work. I've also learned that avoiding micromanaging is also a good creed. As a leader of the New Jersey State Museum, which is an educational and cultural institution serving New Jersey and statewide, I am also aware of the changing learning landscape and have developed educational programs to meet the evolving needs of students and educators. We are currently completing construction on an Innovation Lab Learning Center, which will serve as a hub for STEM learning, as a statewide hub for STEM, both onsite and virtual learning. I also recently led the organization through a comprehensive strategic planning process, so I'm very familiar with both the process of creating strategic plans, but then also the importance and some strategies around implementing them. Much like the district's strategic plan, our, our plan includes measurable objectives to help guide planning, and that also serves as a mechanism for evaluation of progress realized towards the defined goals. I have three children in the Verona School District, and my wife and I moved to Verona about three years ago. Do you want me to go on to the next question?
Okay.
Just keep going. Okay. So what motivates me to consider this position? One of the principal motivators for me is the district's mission, to establish our public schools as a center of an engaged and supportive community, to empower students not only to achieve academic excellence, but to be active lifelong learners and good citizens. Through my work in the nonprofit and public sector, this educational mission has been a constant for me. I've dedicated the last twelve-plus years to educating and empowering youth, first through my role as a 9/11 historian and educator, and now by inspiring lifelong learning through my role as the executive director of the New Jersey State Museum. My second and perhaps prime motivator for wanting to be involved and contribute to our school district, of course, is my children. As a parent of three Verona students, I want to be a part of a team that can help ensure student achievement and the long-term success of our district. Ironically, I always tell my children the need to be good citizens, be inclusive, they'll talk about others, be respectful, to be true to themselves, and to be builders. I'm a big believer in the power of education. For a stretch, I was a professional graduate student, earning both a master's in public administration from Rutgers University and a master's in museum studies from Seton Hall University. The top three priorities and challenges that I believe that our district is facing. I had the, I was fortunate to be included in the strategic planning process, the board strategic planning process, as a participant on the Building Grounds and Technology Action Committee, and I believe through that participation and process, I really gained a good sense of the challenges facing our district. These are in no particular order of importance, I believe they're, each are equally important. Number one, the district's technology, infrastructure, and aging facilities. Given the proliferation of digital content and web-based teacher resources, it is critical that we upgrade our district's technology infrastructure and our capacity and our tools. The specific result statement that we crafted for the strategic plan gets to this point. We want to realize a 21st century learning environment for our students. At the same time, we desperately need to invest in our school facilities and grounds. And I'm well aware of, you know, the pragmatic considerations here, and the number two item that I've noted here is the need to secure adequate financial resources. I know this is a big priority to the board, I'm not naive, I understand that everything begins and ends with the budget. I understand that the rise in healthcare costs have impacted our budget and strained it even further, but I want to commend Superintendent Forte and the board for your efforts this past year in identifying outside sources of funding. I believe as somebody who's worked in the nonprofit sector for more than a decade, having raised more than eight million dollars, that I could be helpful in regards to helping to identify outside sources of support, financial support, to offset some of the budgetary And as example, during my career thus far, I've raised over eight million dollars in philanthropic support to fund some of the educational programming that I've developed and spearheaded. One of the, one of the grants that I'm most proud of was a $325,000 grant from the North Jersey Media Group Foundation to develop a national interdisciplinary 9/11 curriculum, which is actually currently used in more than 2,000 schools across the country, so it's one of the programs and accomplishments that I'm most proud of. And then finally, the third item is the need to enhance our school security resources. This remains a top priority for me. I first started attending the board meetings last year in the aftermath of the Sandy Hook Elementary school shooting. I know that that event really shook many communities across our country. It was something that, you know, as a parent, you know, and certainly as a 9/11 family member, I felt very strongly and felt that, that loss and, and felt like that event was something that we can never forget, just like 9/11, and we need to continue to remember the victims of that tragedy. So I began, I began coming to board meetings to learn more about the district's efforts and around enhancing school security and how the district was going to respond. And I wanted to commend Superintendent Forte and the board for the work that you've done in this area thus far, in the way that you're building and have built a relationship with the township of Verona, in coordinating with law enforcement officials. But I do understand that there's, you know, budgetary constraints around what we can really do in regards to staffing or additional security equipment and materials, so I know that it's a work in progress. So I'm hoping that some of the action steps that we line, outline through the strategic planning process around the building grounds, facilities, result statements, will be something that will come into fruition and that I will have the opportunity to support. So in closing, I truly believe that I have a proven track record of realizing success of building, of empowering regardless of the challenges that I have faced, and I'd like to have the opportunity to join you in advancing the mission of the Verona Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go to the library board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, next we have, next we have Ellen Connell.
Ellen Connell, yes, hi. My name is Ellen Connell, and I am the resident of the Verona. And, Ellen Connell, just hold the mic towards you so that, yeah, just right towards you. So, if you could, first question maybe?
First, yeah, no problem. First question is introduction about yourself. The second question is what motivates you to consider this position? And the third question is, if you can think of three top priorities or challenges.
Okay. Well, my name again is Ellen Connell, and I am a resident of Verona. Today, I was recently on the red carpet as well. I'm a baker, and my son was going into the military, and he had to gain weight, and I designed a chocolate chip cookie that helped him gain weight with mint, and I won a top baker in the state of New Jersey. So I got up today by the Star Ledger. So today I've been on the carpet, this is my second time to be on the carpet in front of the media. I feel that it's time that the Verona Board of Education has a diversity of people, and that when, how we spend our money, why we spend our money, and what we spend our money on should be a consensus by all, and I feel that I can help in making that decision as to how we spend our money, why we spend our money, and what we spend our money on, being that I am a parent, a parent who has a child who's a senior, and being that I am a parent who has a child who graduated from Verona High School. I feel sometimes we do not spend our money wisely, that we can look at different ways to spend our money and come up with different ways that are better for the school systems, and I feel that that is a problem and that it needs to be addressed. And I just feel that I am a well-rounded, well-ground individual, and that I could help facilitate the Verona Board of Education in doing a better job. Thank you.
Next we have Anthony Caera.
I'm getting, thank you for the opportunity to take this position, but we have background on being president of Verona for about the last three years. I have two children in Verona, the school system, one in kindergarten, one who can't wait to be there. He's presently attending creative beginnings in the pre-k. I'm an attorney, well, I've been practicing for about twelve years, and I'm head of litigation department at my firm, doing mainly trust and state work, contested accountings, commercial litigation. It's quite boring, but nevertheless, very labor-intensive, very tuned to numbers and detail, and that's kind of what I think I bring to the table. In looking at Mr. Ball's resume, quite impressive, she clerked for Mr. Ball, of course, resigned her seat, she clerked in the L Division in New York, clerked for New Jersey. She worked in private practice for some time, and I did the same, and I think that having an attorney's voice on board is certainly something that helps both engage the public and also protects the board's decisions from challenges that may result from lawsuits or things of that sort. So I'm happy to get benefit of my time, I'm obviously a concerned parent like so many others, but education is something that is emphasized for me during my lifetime, originally grew up in the city of Jersey, and I was sent to private school, Holy Rosary Academy, there. Those schools have since, many of the middle class, private schools have since become defunct due to the pressure that's been exerted on the middle class, given the economy, and given the way wages have trended over the last thirty years. So part of sensitivity to that was making sure that we engaged, we moved to a district that had an excellent school system, and I want to do my utmost to maintain that, and provide every child in Verona with the opportunity to allow us their potential. They face a challenging world, far more challenging than we have, which really, I think, leads to the, to the three main challenges facing this board, which is first and foremost, communication. I think our decision-making begins and ends with a mandate from our electorate, and I think effective engagement with the community is something that is quite necessary. And I think that point, it's a tendency, during recent vote, with the extended day, extending kindergarten day to one and a half day, I saw that vote fail by about fifty to a hundred votes. And I think that part of the problem is, reflects a reaction by certain people in the school district to any increase in tax level. You know, there's been a tremendous amount of input in the media that has an assumption, if we have an increase in a tax levy, that's reflexively a bad thing. And I think that's something that needs to be challenged. I think that understanding how Verona works as a community and understanding that by pooling our money and applying it to accounting good is something that should be logged, if not something that should be distinct, I think that, that would help advance our mandate, our cause further. I think also tying the benefits of an excellent school system to increasing property value to those that may not have children in the school district, nevertheless want to pay them there, don't want to see their household wealth decreased, don't want to see their credit go underwater, don't want to see their related borrow be affected. And I think tying that all together would really help us move forward. And that's not to say that the information on the board's website isn't available, but I think the focus should be given to somebody working nine-to-five, coming home, and they're tired, and they definitely want to notice what's going on in their community, and we can give them a short synopsis day over day, whether that's by email or some other inexpensive means. But I think engagement is essential. Second consideration, I think, is obviously budgetary, that always comes from what we're gaining versus what we're losing, and obviously we're all sensitive to that, having children in the schools, and also being, many of us being taxpayers ourselves. I think tying back to the communication issue is that if we, if we show people that we're not looking to spend our money unwisely, and we're not applying it incorrectly, and that to the extent that we misapply money, that money will be lost on something we could otherwise spend it on, expand the programs that are working, expand programs more efficiently. So that's something I think the board has always taken eye to, and that's something that we can advance together. So budgetary, I'd be happy to work with the gentleman, without to excuse himself, to do another meeting, but he is, if he's able to fundraise, if he's able to, to bring in that money, that's something that we certainly applaud him for. But I think that beyond that, they say, the need to really engage this process, the need to work in tremendous detail on exactly what it's all about, and, and really focus on this board and this job for what it is, committed to our children, a need to be present, a need to attend meetings and give your full commitment. With respect to the third challenge, I think, is curriculum. I think that applies not only to do what is presently taught, but the application of technology to that curriculum. We're now faced with a variety of technologies changing yearly, and when we were, when we were school kids, we just had a word, the next book coming, the next way to teach things. Now we have integrated lesson plans, we have studies done, specifically Harvard Project Zero did a study on modalities of learning. For example, they've tested children for the manner in which they learn. So some they learn visually, some they learn audibly, some they learn in different ways, and that may be something we want to, we want to look at, methodologies of teaching our children, and way more effectively communicate information to them in a way that's retained. And then technology itself, which relates back to the budgetary issue, technology's expensive, and we have to make decisions regarding how it should be applied, in what manner, and what's cost-effective. So for all those reasons, I think that ought to be the focus certainly coming to the board. This will be my first experience on board, it's not the first board I've sat on, I've sat on planning boards, dealt with a number of issues, but I think what you're getting in me is somebody who's focused and committed to Verona in the long term. I think you're getting someone who has a lot of experience, but when you mention old bro records, requests, notice requirements, understand them, and I'm happy to work with the board to the extent that my legal experience would, would permit. I know comments were made thus far on outside sources of funding. I think that's important to secure also, but I caution that there are always attempts through outside sources such as advertisers to permit our schools to teach, in essence, the next generation of consumers. So I'm wary as to funding that would come in return for, in essence, teaching our children how to buy a product or what toothpaste to use, and things like that. I think that schools are centric in that regard, and so I persist funding from that in the end. Also, security, I did read an article that one of the board members, in common, there was a proposal about having high school kids wear name tags and, and other points of identification. I'm happy to work, to work with the board in certainly improving security, but I think, I think I agree with the board member that mentioned that that goes a little too far. And I don't think, you know, we do have these very serious issues related to school shootings, but I think that, that we also have to draw a line between that and liberties, and I identify the root cause of the problem, identify the students that may have mental health issues, things of that sort, to really balance the right of a student to enjoy his life and not live in fear versus healing and security, and we all want to keep our kids safe. Finally, I think a big part of board, I didn't prepare remarks for the reason that I think a lot of this job is to think on your feet and to respond on the fly and really make, you know, informed decisions quickly, and you're called upon them, and I think that my experience as a trial attorney, my experience as a school, it relates itself to that. So with that, I invite any questions, not anything that I've said thus far.
Thank you very much. I can head that library to the board. I'll watch the TV. Next up, we have Dominic Ferro.
Hi, how are you? Hi, my name is Dominic Ferro, I'm a resident of Verona, which I live. I have two children in the district. My daughter Jordan is ten, she's in eighth grade. My son Jake, he's eight, he's in ninth. I have nothing but great experiences with the district, every teacher that we have the pleasure of meeting, and he's called my children. The entire district is just wonderful, which leads me into why I would want to be on the board is, the Board of Education and the education system in any town is vital. It's probably the jewel of the town because the children, our children, everyone's children, are the future of our community today and tomorrow. Educating them and preparing them for the challenges of what today brings, like you had said before, our lives were much different growing up than our children's are going to be like. The challenges in college education costs, and what they can do, where they can go, you know, those decisions are much harder than when I decided to go to college and where my career path took me. I've been working for the Township of Melville Public Works Department for twenty-six years. I've been in government, you know, that long, I've been involved with so many different aspects of municipal government, which I think would be a great asset to the board. I've been involved, been directly obtaining 1.2 million from FEMA for acquisitions of homes through the flood plain, worked with grant writers to secure 1.5 million from the Environmental Infrastructure Trust for operating its water system. And those are grants, you know, we didn't have to pay them back, which is a great thing for the municipality. So I was involved in grant writing for secession claim, put my position as, my retirement year is only under ten years, and my job is a licensed water operator, which is required by the state. Most townships unfortunately don't plan for the future, so we secured about $50,000 so I can train the gentleman who's going to take over for me in the near future. I also own a small business. I've been trying to finish my business degree, I'm in the last class, my last class before I graduate in December. As far as the challenges that the district faces, probably, I really don't know the ins and outs of the district, and some of the candidates might know, but outside, outside problems that affect the district are the funding, the state aid. Unfortunately, the suburban schools always get shortchanged as far as what the state aid and how that's calculated. I don't know what the solution is legally, but I really think if we lobby with other suburban districts, local districts, to change the legislative, in the legislature, change the way that that is calculated, I don't know if that's possible, but that's something that I always thought is something that we really have to focus on, because there's no reason state aid to an urban district and to take $30,000 to educate a kid in an urban district, when approximately we, we can do it here for thirteen, fourteen thousand, I don't know the exact number, but I know we see that facility. Secondly, with the budget the way it is and the constraints, I understand every municipality, every Board of Education, we're all going to do the same things. And I understand academics are the priority, and they always should be, but other things that have been unfortunately cut and we really have to maintain are, not everyone's college-bound, we don't, for those college-bound students, there's guys that, you know, they're just not academics, the trades and the arts and the music and the athletics. Unfortunately, we have to find a good balance for that, for the academics and the non-college-bound students, because we need plumbers, we need carpenters, we need electricians and things like that, and we really need to not forget those. They are part of our community, those kids, and they're going to be a part of our community in the future, so that's something I think we need to really focus on. Thirdly, with the climate the way it is, and I understand as a municipal employee, you know, I felt the strain of what needed to be done. I'm not complaining what the legislature did and what was passed as far as us paying for part of our medical benefits, I really don't care about that, I think it was necessary. But that, that being the case... But that, that being the case, we have a, a great core of teachers here. We have to ensure that we keep these teachers, the good ones here, make Verona an attractive district for student, uh, students, excuse me, for teachers to come here, the ones that are the best of the best, they not look for alternative places to go, maybe a district that pays a little more, that offers a little bit better of a frame of benefit. Oh, if you're viewing the core values of, of the district, and, and a couple jumped out, integrity, responsibility and respect. It's my job to teach my children those core values. But we also have teachers that spend an awful lot of time with my children, and I want to make sure that we have the best of the best. So moving forward, I just want to make sure that it's a very attractive district for teachers, the best of the best, to come here and teach, because they, they do have a lasting impression on my children. My children always speak highly of the teachers that they've had so far, and I want to make, I want to make sure that continues. And last question. Oh, what motivated me? Oh, I, I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I was a little nervous.
Steve Sordell.
My name is Steve Sordell. I am in my second half of a century old. I was born and raised in New Jersey, with a short period of time I lived in Texas, and in nineteen ninety-eight we moved to Verona with, my family has three kids. Two of them went through the Verona School District, and they are both, I'm proud to say, in elite private colleges and among the top students from their respective districts and, and doing well. And so Verona has, I've got my money's worth, if you will. And then I have, my son is a freshman in the high school. I have a chemical engineering degree, a master's in business, and my, my business is in the chemical industry, serving the pharmaceutical, global pharmaceutical industry. In two thousand and three, well, I ran three elections for a school board, my record's two and one. And I saw, ultimately, at the end, I served for seven and a half years on the school board and gained a tremendous amount of respect and, and experience for what a school board member does. So I was, participated in two teachers' contract negotiations, I was a delegate at the New Jersey School Boards Association. I helped shepherd through a thirty-four million dollar construction project that was very successful in its execution and keeping it on time and within the budget. I also helped steward through a, our first, the district's first strategic plan. And that was born out of, when I joined the board, it was, I, I thought it was a good school district, but I, I, in my opinion, it wasn't, it's not really a great school district, so there were things that, it's a great place to be, but in terms of running a school, there were things that we needed to do. And so I was, had the great opportunity of working with Earl Kim to institute, to adopt that first strategic plan, which I think put us on a path of realizing some of the academic achievements that we are, that we realize really, that we're seeing, that are manifesting themselves in the, the last couple of years. So I am proud to have been a part of. The, in terms of my motivation for, for doing this, well, to some degree, I, I miss it, right? I, I, so a lot of people say what a thankless job it is being a school board member. And I, I never bought into that, I never really observed that, I never experienced that, so I didn't think it was a thankless job. Certainly, there are things, there's a, sometimes there's a big perception difference between what people think a school board member does and what a school board member does. So the, and the reality is that as school board members, we deal with two things, that people's children and their money. And it's, there's not always the enriched degree of objectivity. So that we, sometimes we find ourselves in, in situations that are interesting, that we would not have never predicted. But nevertheless, the, it was really a great experience that I had. And what makes me want to get back is a lot of, really, really, I didn't realize it really, I bet, I, I, I was doing a good job, because a lot of people said they really missed me on the school board, which surprised me, because I really didn't think I did all that much. But nevertheless, I am a public, I'm happy to be, to serve. At the end of the day, that's really what, what motivates me is, because I want to see the schools do well. And I think the top three priorities and challenges that, that I, that I see in the school district right now, it's a party, but this is, it's not really, I'm not trying to be cheeky, but it's the three Bs, right? So one is the board. I think the, the board's number one job is to hire and retain and build a relationship with the superintendent. That's really the only thing that we do as board members that makes a big impact. And I think that the, the board can do, can foster and enrich those relationships more than where we are today. The, the next challenge, it's always, it's always a challenge in this, in the school board is the budget. And so I think three quarters of the job of the school board member, usually the budget, is not doing things, right? So, you know, what can do, like not, again, this is just my opinion, I think, but not doing full day kindergarten, not doing too much security, right? Not diverting your attention away from things that really don't deliver the product. That is what drives these academic and the career success of our students, as well as what determines our property values. So we spend a lot of time on the board deciding not to do things that divert those resources away from, from the stuff that kind of has to stay on autopilot and find ways to, to advance, like the strategic plan around the, some of the curriculum changes that we did. And then the, the third challenge that I see at the board level is the, and of course it's tied to the budget, but the physical infrastructure. So it's, it's, it's a, it's not, I mean, I know how it all happened, but the reality is we have aspects in the school district that are, like the fields, are not even playable. And we have, we, when we did our original construction budgeting with the architect, they were suggesting that we need sixty million dollars worth of additional capital and investment, and we did half of that. So there's, so there's a price to pay, right? So you, it's, it didn't go away, right? Unless they were completely inflated their, their, their budgeting, but it's unlikely that they got it that long. So that all of those expenses didn't go away. So that's really the third challenge that I see confronting the board. And my experience, I've done, I've been there, done that, so to speak, confronting all three of those challenges, that they didn't go away, fortunately, unfortunately. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and make my case for being appointed again. Thanks.
Next up, Don Flood.
Hi, my name is Don Flood, and I did also prepare some, some notes for tonight's meeting, so I hope I don't put you all to sleep. But anyhow, my name is Don Flood, and I'm the resident of one twenty-seven Fairway Ave. I have one child currently in the district, and my other child graduated from Verona High School in June and is attending Fordham University. About myself, I received a master's degree in environmental engineering and a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from NJAD. I have a professional engineering license. I am an engineer by trade and have been in the engineering construction industry for over twenty-five years. Currently, I'm the chief marketing officer for a major global engineering company focusing on energy and infrastructure design. Within my responsibilities are bidding proposal, public relations, communications and business development. In addition to the regular business, my company has also had a long-term relation with Bergen Academies High School. This public STEM and arts magnet school renowned for their innovative practices is located in Bergen County where I work. I personally participated as a mentor in the school's senior learning experience. Every Wednesday during the school year, a bright young student with an aspiration for engineering spends an entire workday with me and my staff, experiencing the career of an engineer firsthand. I hope to inspire innovative learning processes like this within our school district. Beyond my professional life, I have a strong record of volunteer and community service. Currently, I'm the treasurer of the Verona High School School and Community Association and the treasurer of the Verona Sports Booster. I was the treasurer and a board member of the Montclair Hockey Club, a five oh one C three organization with six hundred members and an annual operating budget of one million dollars that provides hockey instruction, lead play and scholarship to our area youth. I've also been the treasurer of the Verona Fifth Downers, the Verona Baseball Parents Association and the VGR Hockey Boosters, an organization supporting a very successful co-op program between Verona and Glen Ridge High Schools. Throughout my board and treasury experience, I like to think that I left each organization a little bit better, financially sound and ready to grow into the future. In addition, I work directly with our youth as a baseball, softball and soccer coach and also as a hockey manager. Finally, I was on the finance team for the Board of Education Strategic Planning Committee. I studied this year budget and got some good instruction from some of the board members and administration. I understand its nuances and its challenges, and I helped shape this district's strategic plan. But it's more than just my experience, it's also my approach. I will listen, collaborate and find solutions to difficult problems. I will draw opinions without being opinionated. I will build relationships, not alliances. I will be a leader, not an elitist. I will inspire innovation and finally, I will help overcome the challenges and be an advocate for our students and the taxpayers of Verona. I take this commitment very seriously. In terms of what motivates me to consider this position, first and foremost, it's a desire to serve my community and ensure that the youth of Verona will achieve their potential as active learners and productive citizens through rigorous curricula and meaningful enriching experience. It's part of the board mission statement. I owe my career to education and the love of my parents and family. My two children have benefited from Verona schools and I want to have the chance to give back. Second, I know that I can make a difference by providing meaningful leadership in defining the strategy of the district and improving our programs in a fiscally responsible manner. I contribute, I can contribute to any of the current standing committees, including education and curriculum. As an engineer, I fully support current STEM initiatives and hope to help the administration build relationships with such fine institutions as NJAD. Finance, as stated earlier, I was on the finance team in the Strategic Planning Committee. I understand the constraints of trending, the collective bargaining agreement, healthcare costs and community initiatives. I will meet this challenge and hit the ground running to ensure that the Board of Education mission is responsible to both the taxpayers and the students. Buildings and grounds, my engineering and construction career is a natural for this arena. I have the construction, contracting, scheduling, budgeting, design permitting and quality control experience necessary to succeed. I know what it takes to develop, finance and deliver capital and maintenance projects. Athletics, I am an avid Verona fan and participated in many booster organizations. I have established relationships with the A D and the athletic staff. I understand the challenges and more important, I understand their shortcomings. Community resources, as witnessed by the strategic planning effort and even just this effort right here with seven candidates for the open slot, Verona cares about our community and we care about our schools. By partnering with the community, we all win. I will support developing a strong relationship, not only with the township of Verona, but also the surrounding communities, county, local institutions and the people of Verona. Many people volunteer in Verona and by working together, we can all achieve more. And finally, my top three priorities and challenges that face the Verona School District, and these come from experience. One, increase the focus on academics. As I stated earlier, I applaud the STEM initiative, but understand that there's more work to be done to meet the challenges of today's world for our students. Every child matters, not just the top ten percent. Two, ensure financial responsibility. Our budget has challenges, as I mentioned before, but these challenges need to be met. We can't afford waste or false starts. As a board member, I will be smart about this. And three, we need to improve our dictating infrastructure. Heat, hot water, safety, technology, bathrooms and a solid roof of our children's head isn't enough. It's the minimum, and I'm afraid that our kids deserve that. We can't throw money at it, but we need to be smart with a responsible maintenance plan and improving capital plan. Finally, I'd like to thank the current board members, Ms. Nargina and the administration for the opportunity to apply for this position. I thank my family for supporting my decision to apply. And finally, I wish all the applicants the best of luck and hope that after this open board seat is filled, we will all continue to work together for the youth of Verona. And if you have any questions after my prepared statement, I'll open.
I think every, every family member supports it until they realize that you're on. All right, final candidate tonight is Joris Sidra.
I know it's very hard to speak after everyone, you know, after those great speeches, and I have a completely different story. I'm born in Egypt, I'm forty-five years old right now. I born to a, a family, and my dad is a Catholic Orthodox priest in a country that the minority of people over there, you don't have any rights at all, which is it. I grew up learning, respect to everyone. I grew up learning to change the bad into good. I grew up learning that I have to prove myself no matter what. In my education, I suffered a lot, as anyone suffered in some school systems worldwide, and I always tell my kids that you don't feel that because you grew up in a country where that gives you the freedom and give you everything. that gives you the freedom and gives you everything. You don't feel it simply because, you know, you find it as something easy. But I do feel it because when I moved here, I felt the big change I had, and I'm having right now because I moved to America and became a U.S. citizen. I was very successful in my education. My parents wanted me to be a doctor, so I got my M.D. degree. My thinking was in education. I feel I'm a teacher by nature. So I decided to achieve both, I will be a medical doctor, and at the same time, I will do my best to be a college professor. And it came to a point, because I am from the minority there, I can't reach to that position. I went beyond my bread line. I had to work in certain areas where there is no equipment at all. I learned how to use the minimal to achieve the best, and I learned to change the useless to useful. Everywhere we are, we can change things. It's not hard, it's just the motivation and the desire to do it. After years of working, having my own practice, got married, then we decided to achieve our dreams. We had a chance to move to America, to come here and achieve our dreams. And when I came here, my first challenge was I need to teach in a country. I was able to get certified, and I'm teaching right now in the New York City program and medical program, and I worked in college as a full-timer professor. I also teach at Essex County College and Casake County Community College. We moved to Verona in 2008. The motivation for us to move to Verona was actually the education system and the school system. I had to look over maybe, you know, 70 or 80 towns to choose from, and I chose Verona because I felt that my kids would be safe and would learn right in this school system. I don't say it's the best or it's the perfect. I mean, we all look for the perfect, but it's one of the best school systems we have in majors. I see right now the numbers are increasing because people keep moving. They always look at our schools, and I think it's the major thinking for the parents who are willing to have their kids learn the best with the east coast. When I moved to America, I started to feel the big difference between what I had over there and what people have here. And I started to work as a college professor to change the failure into success. Sometimes people don't feel the blessing they have, and they feel that, you know, they don't have any hope. While we have the blessing with them, and we have the chance to grow, we just need someone to turn the light on for them and just make them move. So after being here for five years, after, you know, getting about my achievement, I felt that there's a point I have to turn back and start to pay back to those who dead held me. That town that I moved here to make my kids have a better education in, I have two kids, one in the sixth grade, my daughter Jessica, and my son lived in the fourth grade at learning, my daughter at the middle school. So one day I was reading my email, and I find that email coming asking for a board member to volunteer, so that motivated me to come and start to apply for that position. I am just willing to come to be a member of the board to pay back for the scam I live in and for the country that gave me the real freedom and the respect. You know, I start to apply in my life and everyone of my kids' life. What I think is, these things we have to think about for the challenging in the future, we need to invest more in our kids' mental and physical health. Having healthy kids, investing more sports, work, invest on, in, you know, nutrition of the kids, giving the kids how to eat healthy, teaching the kids how to manage their life on the right way. Most of our kids, you know, don't get the right information because they don't get the right resources. So investing in the mental and physical health will actually improve our academic work in the district. Number two, we need to invest more in our security, it's very important. We need to be more close to our kids, our teachers. You know, we have great teachers here, we are great assets to any Board of Education anywhere. I'm so proud to be in this town, and every time I meet with my test teacher, I really enjoy being a teacher. They are very friendly, they are, you know, they are, I can't say that they are all teachers by nature, they love to teach, and they make the kids love to learn. The third thing I think is always the budget, which comes last, because simply we can redesign the budget in the way we can manage things. And I'm sure that people will always be willing to, you know, work with us to increase the budget and support the Board of Education if, you know, they see that the board worked hard to improve the education process in our town. I'm so proud of the website we have, I'm so proud of the plan that you had for 2013 to 2018, it's a great plan. I am willing to be a member to help to work with you to achieve those goals. I hope that before 2018, maybe by 2016, by 2017, we will achieve all the goals, and we are going to start to add more new goals for 2020. I wish if you consider me for this position, not to be a member of the board, but to pay back to the country and give me the respect, the freedom, the support, and give it to my test team. Thank you.
Okay, so, so thank you very much tonight. We got through it, I think, quicker than we thought we would. You guys did it real quick. And again, there's no right or wrong answer, we're just looking to get as much general information and perspective about each of you as we possibly can. The, that concludes tonight's meeting. The board's going to go off and talk about what our process is now at this point going forward to get a consensus decision, or at least a majority decision, and then we'll modify that person, assuming nothing's changed and your family found out that you actually are here tonight or something. And then we'll go from there, and then hopefully on our next meeting or sort of the meeting after, we'll have, we have to do a public vote, a public resolution in our board meeting, and that will allow persons to be sworn in, to be seated, and that will be the first meeting. One thing I would encourage though, and I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner, I believe, and that doesn't hear this, but we are in the position to pick a person, and there's a bunch of terrific folks here tonight, all for slightly different reasons, but all for the right general reason to give back and help and to participate in our school system. And I would encourage everyone to stay involved in one way or the other. There's so much help that we can all do in this town, as members of the community, as parents, as citizens, as taxpayers, to make it, continue to make it a terrific place to live and raise a family, and schools are certainly a part of that. So thank you for your time tonight, and we'll contact everyone in a week.
Thank you.